I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have a moment of silence?
Counselor Schneider?
Here.
Counselor Stickley?
Here.
Counselor Jeff Steeritz?
Here.
Counselor Griggs?
Present.
Counselor Scott Steeritz?
Here.
We have five members present. We have a quorum.
Counsel President Chamberlain has excused from this meeting as last meeting or two meetings ago. All right. Counsel has had time to review the prior meeting's minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Motion to approve the prior meeting's minutes made by Counselor Jeff Steeritz and seconded by Counselor Stickley. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
We have nobody coming in to talk to councils today. We do have a couple of committee reports, starting with personnel.
Okay, Shane is not here this evening, so he asked me to present the report. Meeting was held Monday, November 2nd, following council meeting. President, Rashane Chamberlain, Scott Steeritz, myself, also President Mayor Hewner, Keith Torbit, Tom McWhorter, Sarah Wheeler, and Andrea Gurken. Counsel President Chamberlain called the meeting order at 6:36 in council chambers. He made a motion with Counsel Steeritz seconding to go into executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline promotion, the motion or compensation of a public employee, and invite Mayor Hewner, Sarah Wheeler, Keith Torbit, Tom McWhorter to attend. The vote was three ayes, no nays. Motion carries. The committee exited out of executive session at 6:47, and then Counsel Schneider, myself, made a motion to accept the performance evaluation for a court of council with Counsel Steeritz seconding. The vote was two ayes, no nays, one abstained. It was Shane Chamberlain. Motion carries. At 6:49, we adjourned the meeting, and everybody was in favor to adjourn the executive session. Something like that. I would make a motion to table this at this time and reevaluate our clerk, giving our President of Council, Shane Chamberlain, an opportunity to reevaluate, to re, so we can turn in a different one.
I'll second that. I just got some extra questions.
Motion to table the personnel committee recommendation moved by Counselor Stickley and seconded by Counselor Scott Steeritz. Is there any discussion?
You said you had questions?
I'd like to have another personnel committee meeting.
Okay. A public personnel meeting?
What's that?
A public personnel meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Any further discussion? Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Scott Steeritz?
Yes.
Counselor Jeff Steeritz?
Yes.
Counselor Griggs?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Five ayes, zero nays. Motion to table carries.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, let's see. We had a tree commission meeting. Patrick?
As I stated in the council, council of the whole meeting, I was unsure that there were notes, and now I'm aware that notes must be taken. Thank you, Tom. Pete Carr was not present that day, and again, I'm not sure if notes were taken, but I had not gotten them. Nobody has gotten them. So basically, there were only four members present, myself, Dan Nelson, Rick Frye, and Larry Frye, and the discussion was just still considering or concerning the upcoming Trees in USA event. We don't know if we're going to hold it or not. We're 21 of 21, and that's basically all that was talked about. With everyone missing, we didn't have any action or any recommendations of any kind. So that was it.
How many people were on the tree commission?
Six.
I just wondered if you're supposed to have a certain amount there to even have a meeting there.
Well, you can have it. You just can't, nothing can be voted on or passed if you don't have a quorum.
I have to kind of learn some more about that, I believe, because as a council person, I'm not sure what my role is on that.
You're the, you're the acting council, so I don't think you can vote on the tree commission.
So.
So I'm just, it's not Pat's responsibility to take the notes, right?
No, it's not his responsibility, but for council, if there's no one taking notes, it's kind of nice that he did give us some kind of a input of what transpired at that meeting, and then some minutes to come back. Maybe we can get them, but it's kind of hard when you only have a handful of people there. But yeah. I can't think of her name, the man that retired.
Kim.
Well, she used to be the minute taker.
Pete is now, and he is actually under the weather from my understanding.
Okay.
So.
All right. That's good. No action at the tree commission. Buildings and grounds?
That would be me. So on November 11th, we met in the restroom, myself, Steve Snyder, Patrick Griggs. Matt Gilroy was here from Fulton County ED, and Keith Torbit was here. We met on, us here and Zoom with Jeffrey and I don't know his name, Solkoff, maybe?
Close.
Huh?
Very close.
I could be wrong. What is it?
Solkoff.
That guy too. Anyhow, he represents Coldwater Banking, a group that has four-plus acres, which is to the south of Ace Hardware's and also behind McDonald's. They tried to sell it. No one wanted to bid on it. He wants to try to donate it. We talked about Waseon Area Foundation. Right now, that is a problem with the passing of Brett Collar until the group gets together and redoes it, which we explained to him. Matt explained that it could go through the county, but first one would be the Waseon Area Foundation there. So no action was taken. We turned it over to Matt Gilroy and Keith to work on it once we get something going with Waseon Area Foundation, but no action was taken at that time. They're going, we started at 12 o'clock and closed at 12:46.
All right, so no action on that. I guess we will continue to move on then with our department head reports. And we're going to start with Chief Sluter. Wait, you're back.
I have nothing new for the fire department other than proceeding very close to having the union negotiations wrapped up, and Law Director McWhorter's a prior report on the status of that, as we've been communicating the last couple days and over the weekend with our attorney, and we should be pretty close to having that done.
Okay. Any questions for Chief Sluter? Chief, check that.
We had seven people come to take our test for the open dispatcher position. So, and we have our interviews scheduled up for the end of this week, and we will hopefully have someone be able to be selected and maybe in place by the end of the year, or maybe a little bit before, if we can try to fast-track it a little bit.
Any questions?
Yeah, I got a quick question. So is, you know, place union contract, what's type rating this year?
If I remember correctly, I believe it was at 3%.
Really?
Last year was two and a half. This was three, or it changed, or?
I would have to double-check. It's either two and a half or three. I remember it was across the boards each of the three years.
Well, this is our last year.
Yeah, 21 will be the last year. It'll be, that can negotiate next year.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see. Keith?
Just an update for building and grounds. We do have a meeting scheduled with Mr. Solkoff and the Waseon Area Foundation on Friday to discuss that. So hopefully, in the next week or two, we'll have information for another building and grounds meeting to proceed on that. We had our annual PACE meeting at 4:00, which is for the Advanced Energy Corporation. We decided in that meeting to adopt the city's records retention policy so that we're in compliance with the auditor of the state's findings. Our leaf pickup has went through town twice now, and we're finishing up a third round this week, as well as having a crew, starting with the Christmas decorations. As you've noticed, the veterans' banners have been taken down for the Christmas decorations to be put up. The veterans' banners will be put back up the week before Memorial Day next year. They've been turned back over to the American Legion so they can refurbish and take care of any problems that they have, and then store them for us. I have a meeting tonight at 6:00, informational meeting over the Community Development Block Grant, to see what funds will be available for that program for next year. And lastly, I'm working on the EPA's Assessment Management Program for the water treatment plant, and should be having that paperwork filed with the EPA by the end of the week. I think that's it, unless anyone has a question.
Hey, Jamie?
I do not have anything new to report tonight.
Questions for Jamie? I will say we've been very diligently, and I think we're at the final end of what we're starting our finance meeting with budget.
Yes.
Everything has been, we've been getting ready to go, so that'll be a fun, long day we won't get back, but it needs to be done. Okay, Tom?
Following up on Chief Sluter's report, I think the, we'll be ready to present a contract review to the finance committee sometime between now and the next meeting, with the idea that hopefully we'd have a recommendation to approve the contract at that first meeting in December. I don't think the contract is quite complete, but we're pretty close. And Rick and I were talking about maybe, I don't know, that first week in December, what the finance committee wants to do. I don't think we're ready for it this week. That sound fair, Rick, sometime between, I mean, next week's Thanksgiving week, but sometime between next Monday and the first week in December. But that should be ready, and then hopefully we can get our approval on the 7th, if all can go well. Just finishing up the final aspects of it. I think that's really all I have.
Any other questions for Tom? Okay, good. Let's move on. Reading of legislation, resolutions. For first reading is Resolution 2020-20, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement for indigent defense services in county court with the Fulton County Commissioner.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Motion to place Resolution 2020-20 on first reading moved by Counselor Jeff Steeritz and seconded by Counselor Griggs. Is there any discussion? Counselor Jeff Steeritz?
Yes.
Counselor Griggs?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Scott Steeritz?
Yes.
Five ayes, zero nays. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Resolution 2020-21, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement for countywide emergency management agency pursuant to Ohio Revice Code Section 5502. This is the EMA.
I'll make that motion. Second?
I'm gonna add, I'll ask.
Motion to place Resolution 2020-21 on first reading moved by Counselor Scott Steeritz and seconded by Counselor Stickley. Is there any discussion?
I just want to state that this was, this is something we do every year with the EMA, and this has not changed in cost issues. It's the same as what we did the last time. So council's aware.
Counselor Scott Steeritz?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Griggs?
Yes.
Counselor Jeff Steeritz?
Yes.
Five ayes, zero nays. Motion carries.
Okay, we have nothing under second and/or third readings, so on a new business?
I have something on a new business when you get done.
Okay, I'll put you down before we pay the bills.
Thank you.
Uh huh. Motion to authorize the Director of Finance to appropriate $3,500 within the Water Revenue Fund account entitled Water Office Capital, and $3,500 within the Water Revenue Fund account entitled Water Reclamation Office Capital.
I would make that motion. What's the numbers on them?
Account numbers?
I was being nice.
I'll second it.
You don't want to hear me read them.
Motion to authorize Director of Finance to appropriate $3,500 within the Water Revenue Fund and the Water Revenue, or the Water Reclamation Office Capital, moved by Counselor Stickley and seconded by Counselor Scott Steeritz. Is there any discussion? Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Scott Steeritz?
Yes.
Counselor Jeff Steeritz?
Yes.
Counselor Griggs?
Yes.
And Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Five ayes, zero nays. Motion carries.
Before we move on to this B, I want to make sure that everybody is aware, and is everybody in agreement with Labor Day, Monday, change? I just was curious as to what that, is that going to be the same, or are we going back to?
Didn't you give us two schedules?
I did give you two schedules.
We don't know which one we're voting on.
Right. It's in the packet. You guys indicated to me that you liked the one meeting in September, so that was the one I put in the.
That's one.
So you voted on the one meeting in September. Got it.
Make that motion.
Okay.
It'll be the second Monday.
Second Monday?
Yes, sir.
It just takes us all off whack.
It does.
My second.
We could do it. We could do it.
Motion to approve the 2021 schedule of council meetings moved by Counselor Schneider and seconded by Counselor Stickley. Is there any discussion? Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Scott Steeritz?
Yes.
Counselor Jeff Steeritz?
Yes.
And Counselor Griggs?
Yes.
Five ayes, zero nays. Motion carries.
Okay, before we vote on this amount under C, motion to authorize the employee Christmas gifts, is this a total of what it would cost?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a total of $75 per person.
Okay, so.
It's not for a person.
Well, yeah, this, it reads kind of that way, so.
This is just for me?
Yeah, Waseon is good. Waseon is kind on this one.
Yeah, but we got the paper. We got to make sure.
It's $75. Is it 54 employees that we have?
There's 60.
60?
Something.
It's $75 per employee.
Understand that one. Are these the ones you wanted me to go get?
We need a motion for this.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion to authorize the employee Christmas gifts moved by Counselor Stickley and seconded by Counselor Jeff Steeritz. Is there any discussion? Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Jeff Steeritz?
Yes.
Counselor Scott Steeritz?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
And Counselor Griggs?
Yes.
Five ayes, zero nays. Motion carries.
Okay, Harold, if you wanted to.
I have a few, yes, thank you, Mayor. I have a few things. My question is on the evaluation of our employees. Are we still working off of the ordinance 2016-10 and 2016-15 on Charter 148?
Charter 148. Are those the updated?
That's the ones that I understand.
What is the date on the bottom of it?
10/3/16.
Okay, that would be the one.
You as mayor, Tom signed it, Jeff signed it as president. So we paid Nelson, Clemmons and Nelson, over $21,000 for this. Why aren't we, after three years, changing the way we evaluate our personnel?
Okay, Clemmons and Nelson came in with the evaluation process. That is part of, was part of the whole package of what Clemmons and Nelson came in. They came in, and they made the evaluation of the job descriptions.
Right.
That we had to update it because they were so old. So doing the evaluation is something that they put into with each of these job update descriptions, and then the city took what they gave us and put it in play on, I'm going to say, when's the first evaluation? The 16th, 17th? What year it first started down?
I think it might have been 17. I think.
Because we had to be trained by Clemmons and Nelson, more or less, each administration directors and supervisors to be trained on how to give the evaluations.
Correct.
And three years later, as you're saying, when HR got all of the files, because we never had an HR person prior to this, that each department kept files of their own employees within that department.
Correct.
So when it got sent in there, that is when it got noted. I think last year was when we decided we needed, because I know the fire department, the police department were heating the way they understood them to be done. And so we did the training on when the supervisors came forward with our HR, Sarah Wheeler, and she trained us all to make sure that we were all being consistent with how we more or less are going to grade the evaluation categories, okay, from 1 through 5, because some were starting at a different level than what the others were. We all wanted to make sure that we were fair with our evaluations for all employees. So that's why this year was different, and I agree with Patrick that that needs to be noted in each one of the files, that we are now doing the evaluations. According to Clemmons and Nelson, brought them forward to us.
I just think it should have been done at a different time than just immediately at the fourth year end of this. I think that a lot of department heads have messed up back and forth, maybe. I don't know.
Well, it's not a matter of messing up. It was a matter of the way they perceived the evaluation, where it should start, as far as, without having the evaluation in front of us, where you should start the basic, what the employees' levels should be, and start at this number, which is what they put in place. And I understand what you're saying, the timeframe, but until it was realized that not everyone was consistent in taking and understanding the evaluation the same, it couldn't be done. So that's why Sarah literally had every supervisor, every director come up here and say, guys, you know, we all need to be on the same starting area for evaluation.
So we did it for three years one way, and then with a part-time HR person, she changed everything?
No, she did not change it.
Who changed it?
She let us know that we were not all consistent in how we were utilizing evaluation that was put in place.
So then who changed it?
That was actually the administration that decided, and we didn't change the direction of the evaluation. We didn't change anything within the valuation. We made sure that we all understood where and how this evaluation is supposed to be fair, as far as rating, as far as how it's perceived on, making sure you had definition as to why you scored a person the way you did, and things like that. It's just, you know, one of those, years ago, Harold, when we did evaluations, a lot of the evaluations were just done and filed, okay? And when we brought this evaluation forward as updating it with Clemmons and Nelson, we decided, council, the city, decided that we would actually use this as part of an initiative for better work by putting in the merits, which there were merits before, but those were only brought in by supervisors. So this is, this is different.
Did Nelson say we were doing it wrong?
No.
Did anybody call?
Nelson actually.
I'm just curious.
She trained us to make sure that we understood more or less how to do the whole process, but what was wrong is we weren't consistent in each department. We have to be consistent so that we're fair with all employees who are employed with the city of Waseon. We have to be, it's not that we, we didn't change the format, we just made sure that we changed it so that they didn't look all inflated, you know, not all, some. And that's when we sat down with the administration and said, you know, we need to do this correctly so that all of the employees are being evaluated at the starting, beginning level, and no one's getting inflated or no one's coming down. I mean, if you read it, and I know you guys have all said we've seen it, the answers to questions and everything have not changed. The process of grading or totaling has not changed. It's a matter of making sure that it doesn't start out inflated so that we can make sure it's fair.
We was kind of briefed that a 3 is an average.
Yes, that's.
But it'll go from 1 to 5, but there's no way that anybody can get a 4, even though, as we was told.
Do you want to chime in at this as well?
Well.
Because I wish Sarah was here to explain it.
Yeah, I think these questions would be best posed to Sarah in another context, but I think, I think there were folks who did score in the fours. I don't know. Jamie, do you, do you recall?
I was told the highest was 3.75.
Okay, well, that might be.
That was an average.
That might, well, okay, I think what Sarah said was that there were folks who scored fours in individual categories.
Yeah, they had to.
And what we thought, and what we discussed with Counsel President Chamberlain, and he's not here, and Sarah, and I think Jeff, you even heard this as well, maybe in the Zoom, but maybe we didn't. There's been numerous discussions with Shane that the evaluation is going to be done correctly so it's fair, but we also are going to bring down the rate of merit so it will reflect the evaluations. Because the way we had it, I mean, like you said, there's no way they're going to be able to get it. Well, that's not it. It's the fact that we wanted to bring that down and redo that so that it would reflect, just like it did before, only we just cannot have, you know, fives up here because the 3, and it's been explained numerous times, is they're doing their job, exactly what their job description, they're doing it, you know, they're not going this, they're not going under, they're doing what their job descriptive says. That's what that 3 is supposed to be meant. And that's where we were all brought forward by Sarah saying this is how Clemmons and Nelson had brought it forward to us at the beginning, and it should be done that way. It's the only fair way to do it. But the merit, we can adjust that to reflect these weight, or these evaluations.
Yeah, can I just jump in? I think maybe there's two issues here. One is consistency among the different departments for each of the employees. So the employees are all, depending on how they perform, the same scale is being used. And you guys are free, this is to the mayor's last point, you guys are, so let's say the range is, you know, 2.5 to 3.8. You guys are free to set each year the extent to which merit increases should be attached to those numbers. So let's say last year, the average was, I mean, there are a lot of 4.4s and 4.5s. You could have said, okay, that gets a 1.5% additional increase. Now, let's say, I'm just making these numbers up, this year, the average number is 3. You can still say, well, that's on the high range, we're still going to give 1.75 to that high range. So there's the consistency, so everyone's getting, you know, evaluated the same, then you guys have the ability to match up the merit increases that you think are appropriate with those scores. Doesn't have to be the same every year.
And there were a lot of fours given out, and I think. And there were a lot of fours given out, and I think there were some that even got fives for stepping above and going outside of their jobs to help others. I mean, that warrants those scores. It just isn't going to be inflated like, okay, they're, they're starting out at a four and they're getting fives and, you know, it's all inflated up here. It has to be consistent with.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Real quick, two, three things. If some got fours and fives, it must have really sucked down here in the bottom because to get the average down to three, five, you gotta, you know.
They did, it's not comparable, what they got scored this year is not comparable.
But I mean, to take the overall average, if you're talking this year. But, none of, my other, my point was, has nothing to do with that. When you said the department heads were all trained, was, and Shane's not here to answer this for himself, was he involved in the training? Because I was never trained.
Okay, no, this.
He was invited to come to the training three times.
Three times.
This time he was invited to come and.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't know that, I just asked, but I was never trained when I was councilman.
Well, that, that was something.
I had a piece of paper and said, here's the question.
You remember when we had them coming in? I'm, I'm thinking that Heather was at the beginning of Clemmons and Nelson. I think you came in at the end of the Clemmons and Nelson. And the training more or less was the person representing and talking about all the job descriptors and everything. She went over that, you know, how we're going to do it. I don't know, did the supervisors get that training or did that get brought down by the department heads?
The supervisors.
They did, okay. So, that was at the beginning, but this last one, every supervisor, and you guys have heard this, everyone. And there are emails, and it's, Sarah has that of, you know, please come, we really would like to train. It didn't happen, so.
I didn't, I didn't know if he had been told to ask too, but.
Actually, she stepped up and said that, as an HR, that it was her responsibility, and she kind of didn't realize how much the role of, you know, it's awkward. Supervisor for council and who's supervisor for the clerk of council, that she felt, she made a point to make sure, she called and said, hey, you let me know that you are the supervisor, I definitely, you know, want to make sure that I do my due diligence and contacting you on anything that is is included with supervisors, and that is where she sent the emails and, as Jamie said, three times. So, it wasn't as far as, you know, it's, it's a learning thing, change, it's just a change. And hopefully, we can bring down, and, you know, there's been discussion on what we're even going to do with merits this year yet, but the council needs to bring that forward, and Sarah would gladly come and talk to you about it.
There's other department heads that have been called in different times to Sarah and explained that they evaluated wrong. And there's a lot of our employees that don't like their, what their evaluation. Because in their portfolio, they used to get, as Patrick was saying, 4.2, now they're getting 3.2. Looks like they're a bad employee.
And that's where we've mentioned, and it was a good thing he brought that up, that we will put in every file of employees that this year, that this was addressed citywide for all employees. So, that whoever's looking at that is going to know that the city made an adjustment to the merit scale according to reflect their evaluation. So, they can see it and say, this is not reflective of a lower. So, she's going to make sure that happens, so that.
We just want to make sure we were still working under these resolutions, Mayor.
And that is the same resolution that we adopted Clemmons and Nelson.
Correct.
And it, it's the whole, the whole, everything that they did for the updates.
So, I have one more question and then I'll get out of it. Did you have anything to do with this letter sent to us?
What was it?
By law, I record.
Did I have any, no, I didn't mail that letter, no.
Did you have anything to do with the terminology, Anne? So, Tom, you just did this all year on your own, so?
Typically, I don't do much without consulting the mayor, so she was aware of the.
So, basically, she knew the terminology that was in this?
I think she reviewed her prior draft, but that was my.
And also the one that came in this?
What, no, I didn't, I don't know what you're talking about.
Tom sent another one out advising us how we're supposed to vote tonight?
No.
Or things won't, not go good.
Okay, you asked me if I had anything to do with this.
I just wondered.
Tom and I did discuss afterwards when what transpired after the meetings.
Okay.
And the letter went out. Because he's responsible as well as I am for the city and the actions. So, what are you asking, Harold?
Well, it states that if we don't vote a certain way, there will be suits that could happen against us. And I think that's collusion.
Does it state that?
And that's what happened in Toledo, when a few people got arrested and went to jail.
Can I see the letter?
Sure.
Because, like I said, my emails.
You were copying all of it, exactly.
My emails are down, okay, I can't, I can't get them out.
Yeah, Harold, the, my, one of the obligations I have is to advise council as to adherence to the various laws which direct how councils operate. And one of them has to be the Open Meetings Act. And so, by virtue of both of those correspondences, I was indicating the ramifications of the way the council and then committee went into executive session. And if I had not, if I were not to have said anything about that, I think I would have been derelict. And I think it's.
But I do believe that talking about personnel is a good reason to go into an executive session.
There's only a certain agenda.
Under Ohio Advice Code.
Well, if you believe exactly what you said, you need to talk to Ohio Legislature because they disagree with you at this point.
I called an attorney, I did talk to one.
I mean, the statute, statute says that you have to identify the specific reason. And there's further substantial support that in view of an evaluation is not appropriate basis, I can give you a case on that if you'd like it.
Again.
But the evaluation was turned, it was going to be part of someone's compensation, like their wages. It could affect it. When we first walked in at our meeting, I don't think any of us knew what that, what the session was for.
If we would have been able to explain some things that we weren't able to explain because it went into executive session, when that came forward to the city, it was stated evaluation that they wanted to go, that you guys wanted to go into an executive session from your council president, I wish he was here. And it was brought to the attention on a Sunday night that they wanted to go into an executive session to discuss the evaluation of personnel committee. That's how he brought it forward, not wages, nothing. So, that's why he made the comment before you guys went in that this is the reasoning that you're going in, you can't go in under that.
Okay, so the second one, we knew what it was about, and you said it was, but you were there, so why, why did you go in?
Well, I was under the impression that it was going to have to do with review of wages. But when we got, as the discussion was occurring, it became clear to me that you guys were discussing the evaluation. And as soon as I understood that, I mentioned that that was an inappropriate basis, and I think immediately Shane then took it out of executive session. So, I thought it was some reason other than an evaluation.
Well, I might have been with you too, because I thought it had to do with wages because of their evaluation.
But because we were left out, we had no idea what was discussed, comes out. The only thing was the fact that I knew what he stated at the beginning. And even the clerk knew that you can't go into an executive session over that because that was stated to Tom.
So, if we have another personnel meeting and we just discuss it in an open meeting and we come up with the same evaluation or similar one, we can pass that legally?
Well, so here's, here's the answer to that. The courts are split, there's no clear law on this, there's no clear indication in statute as to how to handle that. There are cases that have held both that you can't sort of undo it, but there are cases that have held that if the body rescinds the previous motion and then has an open meeting on that issue, that that's acceptable. And that's about all I can tell you on that. I would say if you wanted to take that corrective action, I mean, I think that would be the best approach to take, would be to rescind the previous determination and then have it an open council, an open meeting, and then review it in an open meeting and reach a determination. I can't guarantee you that if someone challenged it, it wouldn't be, you know.
For the last three years on TV, I've been watching lawyers rip the Constitution apart on both sides, so I don't. So, in other words, when they had the personnel meeting and you guys went into executive session, it wasn't told beforehand then either what was going into it?
No, I think, I think the description, the description was the, sort of the laundry list of employment dismissal, discipline, there's like five or six things, wages.
Right.
And actually, so actually, thanks for asking that question, Jeff. The answer is no, it wasn't specified. I think Shane just gave that laundry list. And just for future reference, you have to name, you have to specify which of those, you can't just say personnel, and you can't just say the laundry list. You actually have to indicate which of those five or six things, I mean, it could be more than one. In this case, if one would have said wages, then that would have been an appropriate basis to go into the executive process.
If that's what we're discussing, is wages.
If somebody, if, if the, if the motion would have been based on wages and the topic had to do with.
That is why, that's why he brought it forward before you went in, because.
I didn't go in, I went in on personnel. But, once you got in there, you said that, and so you go right back out of personnel.
Well, I, once it became evident that he was just asking for the committee members to consider the evaluation, that it wasn't really, they weren't addressing the wage issue. At that point, I indicated.
But, it should never got into there, is my point.
He, he said the same thing.
That's correct.
I mean, it should never got into that.
Okay.
But, I don't quite understand really why you didn't say, Mayor, no, they can't do that, I'm leaving.
Well, I did, prior to the council meeting, I indicated that, I asked, the mayor and I both asked Shane for clarification as to which of the specific items in the laundry list going into executive session on it, and he read the laundry list. So, I didn't press the issue in the second.
I wanted it to be on the agenda that way.
So, you just assumed.
The way it was presented, I wanted it to read that way so that it would have been so much easier to say that. But honestly, the clerk knew you couldn't go in that way. And they said, well, let's try the laundry list and if they can come up with something. And that's when he said, if you're going to, you know, discuss because of the way it came forward.
Was it?
It, we tried to say something, but we were excluded from that meeting to go into the personnel meeting.
Okay, right, is it? Let's see, it should be public knowledge, you wouldn't do executive session in the personnel meeting, right? Who all went in on that? Is that, that's public knowledge?
Yes, that's all public now.
Yeah.
So, how many, were it just you two in the three, in the personnel committee, or?
No.
No, I think it was Sarah and.
Sarah went in and Keith went in as well.
Okay.
Yeah, the minutes, I think the minutes reflect that.
But these three, I'm sorry, Jeff and Harold, the first one, they were just on their assumption the same thing that you were on the second meeting that you went into. They didn't know what it was about, I mean, none of us knew what it was about the first one.
Well, we, knowing what was asked, and then it got changed, it should have stayed under that because the request was from Shane to discuss personnel evaluation.
So, I think.
I'm just saying these.
I understand, I understand, I certainly understand that nobody, that there was no understanding that they were going into an executive session.
Yeah.
At that point for an improper basis, and I don't need to, I didn't mean to appuse that. But the fact that we were in the executive session on it was discovered by the rest of us that we were in on an inappropriate basis, then we properly got out of the executive session. But we went in there and there was discussion on the evaluation at the time. And I think that's what kind of taints, if you will, the outcome of the vote.
I think the letter, Harold, from when we discussed all this afterwards, is you guys needed to know this. That was his job, was to send this letter to you so that you know the reasons of going in, what happened, it shouldn't have happened that way.
I might have taken it wrong, because I was, I read it that if I vote a certain way, charges will be brought towards me.
Under their, it states.
Just a second, and I don't think that anybody should tell an elected official how to vote on any issue. That's what I think.
Okay, and I get what you're saying, but I don't think he was telling you how to vote. I think he was telling you that if you vote.
Yeah.
I'm representing the city to say that under the sunshine law, code blah, blah, blah.
It's not the sunshine law, but that's.
It is, there is in the sunshine law, in the open, open, Open Meetings Act. That it states that.
When the meeting is open.
If you act after that, that should be null and void. And I think that's what he's trying to say with this.
Well, I'll take my letter back and keep it for posterity.
And just by way of clarification on the procedural aspect, Harold, there is no enforcement mechanism like a prosecutor or an agent of the state who could, if there is an alleged violation of the Opens Meeting Act, can prosecute or that goes around and looks for these kinds of things. Where the issue typically arises, if there is a concern, and I don't think it's relevant here, but.
No.
But it could happen, if there's a concerned citizen who's disagreeing with the ultimate decision by council, the evaluation decision, could come back and file a lawsuit, ask for injunction, and ask that the thing be held null and void and ask for attorney's fees. Is that likely to happen under these circumstances? Obviously not. But to dot the i's and cross the t's, I think it's important that.
It's fair.
That the decision is pure.
And I agree, but that open sessions are very important for the city. I mean, someone asked, do I want to go into executive session on the buildings and grounds? And I said, no, because I think every session should be open to the public. Because they're the ones that taxes and pay the bills for everybody. And they're the ones that each one of us, six, including you, Mayor, as an elected official represents.
And that's what I think we were trying to, you know. I, I will say, I'm just, I now understand what you're saying, but you all heard me say this. And when it comes to personnel issues, I, when we talk about hiring, firing, wage increase, wage decrease, anything like that, that warrants going into an executive session. And I, I've always felt that way.
I agree.
But, this one, we couldn't find. So, it honestly was his opinion, and after we talked, like you said, do you know anything about this? We discussed the process, and you guys needed to know.
Okay, well, I have one other thing. On our evaluation process, okay, we have been told several times, nobody should get a five. I mean, that was pretty much what we were told, five is pretty much impugnable, okay? You know, I taught for a lot of years, grading scale was A, B, C, D, and F. That's like telling you that you can't give an A to anybody?
You can, if you get a five, there has to be justifiable reasons written down underneath each one that you gave a five to in that evaluation. Steve, there was nothing written under there, there was just fives. There's no, I mean, to be fair to the other employees.
He wrote down a lot of things, I hear you guys.
Not on the first one.
But on the second one, he did, he did, he got a lot of them.
And I get that, and I would love to be able to go over some of the discussion, but that's up to Sarah to discuss that because she and he went back and forth on that.
But I think to be told you can't give the highest possible score. Well, we were told that in the meeting, that that's, you know, you gotta be like Jesus walking down the water.
Go ahead, sorry, sorry to get into you.
That'd be like walking into the high school and telling kids, hey, the highest grade you can get is an A, but sorry, nobody's going to get it.
People got fives on the evaluation, to get a five, again, it's, it's just, it's.
Well, I, I think if they adjusted it, they should have adjusted it up so everybody's files would have resonated with.
But that's your job, and that's what I, we've been discussing with Shane that we wanted to do. It's something that needs to be put in place and discussed, but we got to finish the evaluations, bring them forward, this was the issue we had. It's just a matter of getting it done. I mean, we can go one to five, we can go one to 10, if you feel somebody deserves to be a 10, you know. I, I, it's, it's so much easier, and this is how we just explained it to the supervisors. And once they got it, they understood that this was going to be looked at to bring it down, to reflect their evaluations, they were, they felt a lot better. So.
Well, one last thing for me. I always said we have a law director to keep the city's butt out of trouble. Plus, to keep my butt out of trouble. Because, but sometimes, if there could be a problem, I'd like to know it in advance so I can enter the door before the problems arrive.
So would we.
And I didn't think we got it until there could have been a problem afterwards.
Well, I appreciate that, Jeff, but I thought it was pretty clear than the council meeting that the evaluation was not. that the evaluation was not, I mean, I went back and listened to the transcript. And the mayor first asked for clarification and I asked for clarification. And then when we didn't get it, I tried, I mean, I said explicitly that reviewing an evaluation itself is not a basis. I don't know what else I could have done other than to say, if you guys go in, you're going to, you know, you're subject to a lawsuit.
Honestly, I got the message.
To the extent I didn't, if there was other things I could have done, Jeff, I-
And we got it Sunday, it was like nine o'clock, I got it. And then I, I contacted Andrea to put it on the agenda on Monday. She and Tom went back and forth and we had our meeting Monday night. So I apologize that I didn't get more, more of a, I would have liked to have known about it more and we could have probably gotten this, you know, resolved, but yeah.
Can I say one more thing? And Tom, I appreciate the letter, Tom, you know, telling us what we did wrong. But I mean, there was three letters, two emails, it was a little overkill, I think.
It was one letter and then to follow up?
Well, yeah, we gave it another one here and I think it's two emails.
Did any of you have any questions at all when the first letter went out?
I was too pissed off.
Because you, you took it as you were telling them what to do as a reason?
Yeah, vote this way or-
I think it all would have been avoided if it, if we just would have been able to communicate with you on it.
I go off the left field sometimes. Because I believe in freedom and that flag is a veteran.
I guess Scott, to address that issue, when I did the first letter, I stopped short of suggesting what the ramifications could be. And after thinking about it further and realizing that if the vote came up and it was approved, that it could arguably be null and void, I felt like I just needed to follow up and provide some additional guidance on that. And I'm, I'm not-
And that's why we didn't vote.
What's that?
That's why we didn't vote it.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's up to you guys. I, I, just so to be clear, I'm not, was not in the memo or the letter advocating that you guys vote one way or the other. I guess I did recommend that you not vote to approve it because of the-
Yeah, you did.
Because of the allocate, because of the, it would be violating the Open Meetings Act.
He would have had to say the same thing to you prior to if you guys went and got the second letter.
I just brought it up to air the subject and we've aired the subject.
I think we're on the same page as to what happened, how it transpired.
But I do think there's other personnel in the city who was feeling bad with their evaluation. And I think department heads are still a little confused.
The department heads were not in favor of this at the beginning, I'll be very honest. But then when they understood that we were going to come back to council and ask for the merits to reflect and that, that has been brought to your council chamber and I think a couple of times it's been discussed. Now, honestly, if they're upset with the evaluations because they're lower, that was the supervisors were told and the reasons why, and they were to reflect that back down to, I mean, no one wants to see a lower number. But it's the fact that, you know, for fairness, to be fair to all of our employees in this city, we, we had to, we have to do it correctly.
It would have been nice, and I was not on council, if Jeff signed these as president, you signed it as mayor and Tom signed it. If we had started at the beginning, we would have had a lot less problems than when we got today and three years into it.
What's the date of those?
What's the date?
The 16th.
The last meeting was 10-3 of 16th. Does the city always have evaluations?
Yes, and they were, they were a mess and that's the reason why we didn't.
But you just didn't have merit. So Meg signed it, Tom signed it, you signed it and the mayor signed it.
But I will have a little clarification and we'd have to go back and look at the evaluations the last three years. But I don't think this is a case where we started off completely on the wrong trail in, in terms of what we were originally instructed in terms of from Clemmons and Nelson. I think there was a large amount of consistency at first and then as the system went on two or three years, you know how it goes, then without guidance, the horse starts to maybe go off the path a little bit. So I don't think it's like we were doing one thing and all of a sudden we completely changed. It's more like the horse is deviating and then coming back to the center. I mean-
I was told by council the first year that they felt that I had mine too high for department heads. I was told that. And now we're coming forward and saying, we're all on the same page, we're all doing these fairly and everybody is going to start at the same level and we're going to evaluate. And a lot of people got some really good scores, especially those who had to step up during COVID and take over for other jobs when people weren't here. I mean, there was a lot of good marks and each one of us, department heads reflected on that. People who had to step up and those got, those got put into those evaluations. And I guess it's not the evaluation of, it's the fact that they're looking at, well, I was a five and no. Well, that's because those were not done in the same format.
And Tom, you said, you know, it started out all right and then this kind of went off the thing. But like four years ago, if I would have got a three and the next year you got a three, four, and then if I kept improving every year, that's why it kept going up, I think. So if I get a three every year, I'm thinking, what do I have to do, you know? I'm not going to, I'm not going to try.
Well, I mean, that's a good point. I guess, again, I think one has to differentiate between consistency, everybody's getting graded the same and also then the other issue is whether we should be, what the range should be. So maybe that's a, maybe that's an issue that should be addressed and discussed more. I think everybody probably agrees that it ought to be consistent across the board, right? But I, I understand your point and I think-
They have the opportunity to, you know, if, what is, like you just said, what do I have to do to get better? That's the opportunity for them halfway through the year to do another evaluation so that it reflects at the end. So that, the Clemmons and Nelson has put that in there.
But hopefully every year it goes up some, so.
Well, you would hope so, a lot of them do.
And four, after four years, it did go up, so like all of a sudden.
But you gotta have a reason to, to be able to state that and that's what, you know, we're, I would love to give everybody a five, but not everybody warrants a five.
I didn't say they did, I just-
No, I'm just saying, that's why you really gotta-
But the point, I mean, the point's well taken, Scott, I mean, the purpose, one of the purposes of the evaluation is to be able to encourage folks to work harder and do, you know, beyond what they're asked to do and that should be reflected in merit increases. And if, and if you're always getting a three no matter what you do, it's not productive, so, but.
Right, you know, and I, I'm a firm believer, like I know there's some department, and I, I don't know what goes on at the water department or, or the sewer department, but I know that the people that work for Jamie, they love her. People that work for John, they love him, they'll, they'll go beyond, you know. So I think it has a lot to do with your department people appreciating their people, you know. So then you turn around and-
We have some really good workers in every single department.
We do, and I'm not, I'm not saying the police department, I just don't know, I don't know that anybody.
I, I hear what you're saying.
I don't know anybody.
I think, I think they like Kevin, too.
Yeah, they probably do.
Chief Chilton.
Chief Kevin.
I just kind of hope this was, you know, water under the bridge and-
Yeah.
I do want to bring a point up, if you get an email from Kathy, want them to get it, go out and get it.
I've been hacked again.
You got hacked.
I'm not ready to change my city number. Third hack is a charm. I apologize if you do get one. Okay, with that, we need to pay the bills and, and get out of there, there's nothing else to discuss. Patrick, I wish you would have just not said so much tonight.
Second? My question I answered.
Okay.
Jeff, the only thing I was actually going to say was, and I didn't get a chance, is that, and just an idea, I don't want to make a recommendation, but I feel that with all this discussion, that that letter probably ought to be put together by Sarah.
Yes.
On our city letter, had maybe approved by all the departments, you, Tom, make sure it's legal. And then it gets put in every single person's file and it's, then it's the same letter, again-
Exactly, that's exactly what she was planning to do.
Keith said that he did that for his people, but I think that's wonderful. But I also believe that as big of a deal as this has been made, is that there ought to be a, one letter from the city, from the HR person that goes in everyone's file.
And I think that's, that was what her intent was going to be.
I think it would be just a good, like a good step forward for the city, you know, it would just be an act of good faith.
And a good reflect back on from the city if this is ever brought again. Well, here it is, this is what we decided, everybody was on board. Okay, okay, we have a second?
Yes.
What, what were you?
Pay the bills.
Pay the bills. Motion to approve and pay the bills moved by Councilor Schneider and seconded by Councilor Stickley. Is there any discussion? Councilor Schneider?
Yes.
Councilor Stickley?
Yes.
Councilor Scott Stieritz?
Yes.
Councilor Gray?
Yes.
Councilor Jeff Stieritz?
Yes.
Five Es, zero Ns, motion carries.
Okay, let's motion to adjourn.
All right, motion to adjourn moved by Councilor Stickley and seconded by Councilor Scott Stieritz, did I hear you right? Oh, I thought I heard you say it, I'm sorry. Is there any discussion? I'm sorry, that's all in favor. All in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.